Council come to order, please join me in the. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Here.
Brainerhorst.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Carlstone.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Instrailin.
Here.
The City Council has adopted a code of civility as elected officials. We pledge to promote civility through extending respect to others, listening to understand, disagreeing without disrespect, engaging collaboratively, and speaking up to address incivility. And this meeting is being recorded and broadcast for Pella TV, so anyone who wants to speak to council, please approach the podium up here before speaking, so that those listening at home can hear your comments and see you on camera. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So.
Vincenzo Strailin, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Instrailin.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to reappoint Don Andre to serve another term on the Historic Preservation Commission. Don has served on the commission since 2019 and attended twenty-nine of the thirty-four meetings held during his most recent term. If approved, Don's new term would expire on January one, two thousand and twenty-eight. Can I get a motion for approval?
So.
Support.
Brander Horst, Butler, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Instrailin.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to reappoint Bruce Borchie to serve another term on the Historic Preservation Commission. Bruce has served on the commission since 2019 and attended all thirty-four meetings held during his most recent term. If approved, Bruce's new term would expire on January one, two thousand and twenty-eight. Can I get a motion for approval?
So.
Vincenzo Strailin, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Instrailin.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to appoint Merlin Ross to fill a vacancy as one of the two Marion County extraterritorial positions on the Board of Adjustment. The Marion County Board Supervisors have approved this appointment. If approved, Merlin's term would expire on January one, two thousand and twenty-eight. Can I get a motion for approval?
So.
Support.
Brander Horst, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Instrailin.
Yes.
Motion passed. This time we have opportunity for public forum. Anyone wishing to address council regarding any agenda item, please step forward with a microphone, state your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Support.
DeYoung, Brander Horst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins. Hopkins.
Yes.
Instrailin.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution number sixty-seven eighty-seven entitled Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of an Extension Agreement By and Among the City of Pella, the County of Marion, and Pella Community School District, approving the extension of the Division of Tax Revenue in the Prairie Ridge West Urban Renewal Area in the City of Pella, Iowa. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. For those in attendance, for those watching at home on Pella Fiber, I'd like to direct your attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor Ward stated, this evening's resolution actually approves an urban renewal plan, TIF extension agreement with Marion County and the Pella Community School Districts. And as council is aware, we've previously done this for tax increment financing districts. This particular district is located historically at one Washington Street, Highway G twenty-eight is located right here, Highway T there, County Road T fifteen is located right here. The proposed development is actually a phase-two Prairie Ridge development here that encompasses approximately ninety homes. Now, the extension agreement that we're proposing this evening is a five-year extension agreement for the urban renewal. What this allows the developer to do is capture the incremental tax valuations, so this would be the taxes that are collected on the new homes that are built in the development for an additional five years. Under Iowa law, they can collect it for ten years unless both Marion County and the school district agree to the five-year extension, which they both have. Now, in my previous agreements where we previously proposed these, Marion County Supervisors have made a request, they would like to have input on the distribution of LMI funds and to explain this, what exactly the LMI funds are. If you recall, what the purpose of the TIF agreement is, is to reimburse the developer of the public infrastructure that's located in the development. In this particular development, the public infrastructure cost is going to be right around four point three million dollars. Over the next fifteen years, if the deck, if the homes build up completely, we estimate that the developer will receive about half of the property taxes that would be collected through the development. And the reason it's half is that we're required under Iowa law to set aside funds for low and moderate income families in Pella from the development of the new property taxes. That percentage is about thirty-three percent of the tax increment finances that could be collected in the development, so these would be property taxes off the new homes built in the development. What Marion County Supervisors had requested was just simply to have input on the distribution of funds which have to be spent inside the city of Pella and approved by the Pella City Council. So, city staff thought it was a reasonable request, and that's the one addition that we have to the agreement that's somewhat different than what we've done previously. So, with this, Mayor, that concludes staff's presentation. Be more than happy to answer the questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So.
Support.
Brander Horst, DeYoung, any discussion?
I have a question. When did the LMI funds start to accumulate?
They'll start to accumulate in this particular case as soon as we start receiving new taxes from the homes built in there. So typically, it takes about eighteen months for us to receive the property taxes after a home's actually placed in the ground and constructed and receives a certificate of occupancy from the city. Usually somewhere about eighteen months later, we'll receive property taxes from that home. So at that time, the LMI fund will be starting to be collected for the city.
And this is a reasonably new feature, right?
What, excuse me?
The LMI funds, reasonably new, uh, thing that has to be done, but it doesn't go back to old stuff?
Yeah, it actually does. This has been a requirement under state law for a while on it. What's different with this particular request is this request came from the Marion County Supervisors in looking at the LMI funds and the distribution of the LMI funds over the next fifteen years through the development. They would simply like to have input on how the funds are being spent in Pella. So, not authority, just input.
I think this is great. It shows a collaboration between the county and the city, and that I was really quite pleased to see it.
But, John, just all of the TIFs that we've done, residential TIFs, this required, the LMI requirement has been there, and I think we have started to receive some funds on some network a couple of years ago, or? No, we haven't received any yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But anyway, uh, with as many, as much new construction to have, eventually we'll have a pretty good-sized fund there to spend.
I guess I'd like to give a little more clarity on what input. I mean, as you briefly said, that it's up to us eventually. It does have to stay in Pella proper cit- citizens. So, what, what do, do we need input for?
But, but when this item was discussed with the Marion County Supervisors, it was my understanding that they just simply wanted to have input on it and have an understanding of how the funds were being distributed within the city of Pella. I had thought, since this could be a ways out before committees form, maybe it's a committee that includes Marion County and the school district on this as well, but this was a request they made to our legal counsel, and our legal counsel is actually the firm that actually made this proposal to the county audit it as well, so. So, as much as this is input, it's not broadly defined, but I had thought, you know, there's a range of options that we have for satisfying input. One of them, probably the easiest, is to have a committee on it as well, as far as the LMI funds.
They didn't, they just basically request this with my summation, but I didn't get confirmation on it, but, you know, they were a financial partner in this development, and so it's just more about can we continue to be a partner within this?
Yeah, I think, I think to echo this, a little bit of background, the first Prairie Ridge development, Marion County financed the entire infrastructure for the development, and they, under the terms of the development agreement, the LMI funds are being forwarded on to Marion County, so they can spend that anywhere in Marion County. Being phase-two of the development, since they didn't financially contribute to the development, but they were financial partners because their operating levy will be collected over the next fifteen years and remated back to the developers. That was just their request on the side of it, and it's my understanding for all TIF districts within Marion County, they're going to be making this request in the future, so it isn't just Pella.
Right. I just didn't want it to be construed as governmental overreach. I think it was more looked upon as partnership.
Yeah, I'm trying to wrap my head around that, too. Lynn. I'm trying to wrap my head around that viewpoint. Um, I feel like it's, it is just that.
Overreach.
Even input strikes me as a step towards more than that, um, which, again, I'm very pro Pella, and, uh, what, what economic drive we develop and enjoy should be the jurisdiction who sits in these seats, and so, I'm a little hesitant about the potential for creating a new committee and into all future partnerships involved in more and more of that, so I just want to emphasize that. What happens if we say no?
Uh, just in, in looking at this, if we say no to this, then if there's not an agreement, then what happens is the developer would have ten years under their development agreement to collect taxes, and it's conditioned in the development agreement that is, that they have fifteen years to recollect, collect the taxes. And if we say no, it cannot come to an agreement that they have only ten, so it may jeopardize, may impact the development on it. From my standpoint, after listening to the county and talking to our legal counsel on this, again, it's just input on this, and this could be simply just asking them for input on their, for the board and provide guidance when we actually distribute the funds on it, take it into consideration. That's all the obligation is, it's a non-binding recommendation. They would just like to have input, so, um, with it, this seems to satisfy the concerns. We're happy to work, at least from a partnership at staff's level, to keep the development moving forward as well as the way we viewed it, so.
If it becomes a problem sometime down the road, can we pull it back?
Well, what I would say is, we could always look at it in another amendment if it becomes problematic in the future, but from my standpoint, again, there's nothing that says the city council has to follow their guidance, but we just simply have to ask input on it, and it's only for this development as well, it's not for the rest of the city's developments. As my understanding from a policy standpoint, this is something that future TIFs are going to be requiring from all cities of Marion County.
Yeah, so if you think about Boss Ridge, uh, Timber View, uh, what was, what's the one in Bossland called?
Harvest Adjustments.
Harvest. Well, we haven't had this provision in any of those leading up to this. This is something new and different that they requested in order to agree to the extension, and I don't know what their motivation is, but, uh, I think in this case with Prairie, with the first phase of Prairie Ridge where the city, the county, and the developer did partner, we do have some experience. There's a committee that has to approve, well, maybe all the houses are built there now, but anyway, the city, city, county, and the developer all had to approve housing, what kind of housing, what they would look like and that kind of thing, so we do have some history with working together, but, so. Anything else? Okay, we'll vote on the motion. Uh, all in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Instrailin.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution number six-seven-eight-eight, entitled Resolution Approving Change Order Number One, final quantity adjustments and miscellaneous items in accepting the public, accepting the public improvements for the Broadway Street Improvements Project. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Ward stated, this evening what we're talking about is accepting the improvements in approving change order number one for the Broadway Street Improvements. Now, Broadway Street Reconstruction spans from University Street up to Edin Street, and we have a picture of the street up here on the big board as well. The change order that we're considering this evening is actually a decrease to the overall contract by ten thousand, six hundred dollars on there. We do have the details of the change order as well. Now, if council were to approve this change order, we'd have a final contract amount of one million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, and staff is recommending approval this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So.
Support.
DeYoung, Brander Horst, any discussion? It's a nice new brick street.
It is.
Okay, all in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone. Hopkins.
Yes.
Instrailin.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution number six-seven-eight-nine, entitled Resolution Declaring an Official Intent Under Treasury Regulation one point one five oh dash two to issue debt to reimburse the city for certain original expenditures paid in conjunction with specified projects. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Ward stated, what this resolution would do is just certify the city's intent to consider at least, or actually notify that we're actually planning on issuing debt for certain projects. This is a Department of U.S. Treasury requirement, sort of requirement to be able to issue tax exempt debt, so it's rather a standard procedure for us. Doesn't mean the city is obligated to issue debt for these projects, but at least it provides the city council with the option to issue debt in case we choose to. Furthermore, if we were to issue debt for it, that debt would be tax exempt, but in order for it to be tax exempt, you have to approve what's called a reimbursement resolution, what we're considering this evening. Now, the projects that we have that have recently approved by the city council, we have the Central College of the Walports for roughly three hundred thousand dollars, that we have a partnership with Central College. We also have the demolition of six oh nine East First Street for roughly two hundred thousand dollars. And then included within this budget that we do actually have, actually is the transfer of ambulance equipment of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, staff is recommending approval this evening of the projects, and once again, this does not obligate the city to issue debt, but at least it provides an option to issue debt to finance these projects if we choose to. Furthermore, that debt would be tax exempt, which means it would be a lower interest rate for the city of Pella. So with that, Mr. Mayor, be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So.
Support.
DeYoung, Brander Horst, any discussion?
I have a question. If, so this is the authority to do it, but to actually do it, does it require another vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be a few more votes if we actually issue bond issues for these projects on it, so.
Okay, just report, does treasury require?
This is just the initial step for reimbursement resolution. If we proceed with a bond issue, there'll be a separate vote on the bond issue, and there'll also be a public hearing on that as well, so.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Instrailin.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution number six-seven-nine-zero, entitled Resolution Accepting Public Improvements for the Tulip Torren renovation project. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, very similar to the Broadway Street Reconstruction Project, what we're doing this evening is approving change orders associated with the Tulip Torren renovation project, as well as accepting the improvements as well. Should be noted during the construction of the project or during the repairs of the project, there's a total of thirty-nine thousand dollars approximately of repairs that were needed to keep the project moving along to meet its timeframe that we had for this fall. Now, council ordered through the resolution this evening, we would accept the improvements on the Tulip Torren, and the final contract amount would be three hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety cents on this, and we are recommending approval this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So.
Support.
DeYoung, Brander Horst, any discussion?
Well, I know you've heard this before, but those bands up there, nobody, they look like bands. They look like the Dutch flag, rote bid blau, red, white, blue, and since sixteen sixty, uh, the Dutch flags haven't had any orange or haven't had any gold in them. And, uh, I'm very disappointed in that gold band up there. Uh, the only gold that's been around a Dutch flag has been like gold trim or gold thread or an insignia, you know, on a band for a dignitary or something, so. I guess I can only say I'm extremely disappointed in that gold band, because since sixteen sixty, there has not been any orange or any gold in any Dutch flag. So, first time I came around the corner and saw that gold band, uh, I was horrified. And I know I've heard the story, but, um, it bothers me extremely. So I find it very hard to accept the final product.
Okay. Anything else? All right, we'll vote on the motion. All in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Instrailin.
No. Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution number six-seven-nine-one, entitled Resolution Approving Change Order Number One for the Lincoln Street Improvements Project. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a discussion on this proposed change order this evening. What we have is a change order to approve Engineering Services Agreement with Garden and Associates for the Lincoln Street Sanitary Sewer Project Repair that we have. Now, originally, for the project, actually, we had a project which was occurring between East First and East Second because of some issues in the field of the fall, existing sanitary sewer. What's being proposed is to increase the scope of the project and actually extend out to East Third Street as well. Now, as far as the additional engineering work, Garden and Associates is proposing an additional seventy thousand dollars for the contract. If approved by the city council, this would increase the fees to Garden and Associates just under two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And Denny, is there anything that you'd like to add or the reasoning for the increase in scope of the project?
Like I said, if.
Tell the Mike, Denny.
The green stretch between Lindby Drive and private access to the north, there's a manhole there, to the east, that four hundred foot was found to almost have zero fall. Minimum standards in design of DNR is point five zero and a hundred, in other words, two feet in that four hundred feet, and there's basically nothing there today. We've got failures going on in the pipe, and yet it was not a good candidate for lining. We took a quick look surveying down a block to the east, and there's actually an additional four feet we can gain in the design to get that two feet, if not a little more, and that area of street's aw, extremely narrow and also in poor condition, so it's still money well spent, it just wasn't expected to be spent at this time.
Yes, sir.
All right. Can I get a motion for approval?
So.
Support.
Brander Horst, Vincenzo Strailin, any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Instrailin.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number six, six-seven-nine-two, entitled Resolution Authorizing Agreement with Pella Regional Health Center for Transport Services. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for a brief presentation on the side of it. As Mayor Ward stated, tonight's resolution would approve an agreement in the Pella Regional Health Center, and it's for hospital transport, so this would be transports or air facility transports from Pella Regional Hospital to another, to another hospital facility, most often in the Des Moines metro area and the Iowa City area as well. Now, as far as the agreement itself, what's to be proposed this evening is a one-year agreement, and of course, we have to detail the city's obligation for the transports, and basically what it boils down to is from eight AM to four PM, Monday through Friday, we can do two concurrent transfers at one, at one point in time. Outside of those hours, we'd be limited to single transports at one at a time as well. Now, Pella Regionals into the bargain is they would be responsible for coordinating and prioritizing their transport needs as well. Cases where we could not provide the transport services because our staff is busy serving nine-one-one calls at those times, we simply need to document those instances that we are unable to provide the transport services for Pella Regional Health Center. Now, in exchange for performing the transport services for Pella Regional Health Center, they are proposing to pay the city three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this, but their payment is subject to council approval to hire full-time employees and the city purchase of a transit ambulance that we have. Now, the transit ambulance was roughly about two hundred and eight thousand dollars, and with the four full-time employees, it is important to note that we discussed this at policy and planning at our last meeting in December. Council instructed us to proceed with both of these items, and I believe the ambulance will be delivered this week, Chief, correct? And we have also secured the four additional employees as well for this agreement, so let's go ahead and talk a little bit about the financial, um, overdue proposal, and what we have is very similar to what we discussed in December, and the net financial impact that we believe right now will Pella reach, uh, for the Pella ambulance to the city of Pella is right around a subsidy of a million and twenty-four thousand dollars. But under the proposed agreement, we believe that that subsidy would be just under a billion dollars on it, which means it'd have the overall positive financial impact to the city of Pella from an operational standpoint of roughly about thirty-four thousand dollars. We also believe with the four additional full-time employees that that should help reduce overtime expenditures for Pella, uh, Pella ambulances as well. And we would also like to mention, this is the initial agreement, Pella Regional Hospital, it's very likely this agreement will need to be renegotiated in the future to extend past the one-year term that we have. That would be currently expired on the September thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending approval this evening on this, and be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on the side of it.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So.
Support.
Brander Horst, DeYoung, any discussion and questions?
With the additional full-time employees, significantly reducing overtime, do you have any idea how much that might save?
Brian, would you like to, uh, Brian Weaver, Finance Director, would you like to answer that question as far as the overtime reduction?
Our initial discussions with the ambulance, um, I mean, I think they're leaning towards it would almost eliminate overtime. We still, um, have put some into it. I think we still counted about a hundred hours per employee that would be there, uh, which is a lot less than, I think, we're almost at two thousand hours since this last year, um, for full-time overtime, so. It's going to be one of those things that, you know, their anticipation is it's going to be reduced to, or almost eliminated, um, and we're still budgeting some, um, and we'll just have to see how it plays out, because, you know, intentions, there's still going to be illnesses or that, and we still have, we'll have to rely on some of the part-time, and if they're not available, then, you know, so it's, I don't think it's going to get down to zero, but it should be greatly reduced from what we're currently experiencing. But it's also kind of hard to pinpoint at this point, too.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll vote on the motion for approval. All in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone? Hopkins?
Yes.
Vince Dryland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six seven nine three entitled Resolution Accepting the Fiscal Year Twenty-three, Twenty-four Annual Audit, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain the site, and actually, we do have this slide, and it shows an overview of the audit. When we talk about the city's fiscal audit, this would be the twelve months ended on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. And this evening, we have Mr. Andy Rice from Bergen KDB. That is our city's auditor, so I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Rice.
Thank you, members of City Council, Mike, for having me here tonight. Here to present the audit results for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Have the next slide after this audit slide here, highlighting our independent auditor's report. And I just wanted to start by reminding City Council what our role is as your auditor, and what the role is of management, and it is management's responsibility to prepare the financial statements. And it's our role as your auditor to come in, test, examine, and look at the underlying documentation to support the numbers and disclosures in your financial statements, and ultimately provide assurance through our audit opinion as to whether those financial statements present fairly in all material respects, and happy to report that we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion, which is the best that we can give as your auditor. The next slide highlights some other component, another component of our audit, and that's our Government Auditing Standards Report. We are required in this report to disclose any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that come to our attention as part of gaining an understanding of the city's internal controls over financial reporting. And we did have one finding to report this year, which is a lack of segregation of accounting duties. That particular finding is a common finding for cities of this size. I just wanted to give some additional perspective on that finding, and that it is a very high bar from an internal control perspective to have adequate segregation of accounting duties. In a perfect world, you'd have four different individuals in your significant accounting processes, one for initiating and authorizing the transaction, another for recording and processing that transaction, another individual that has custody of the related assets, and then another individual that reconciles and reports that information. And then none of, none of those individuals should have access to perform any of those other functions. And, and most cities, you know, determine that it's not practical or cost beneficial to have that complete segregation of accounting duties, and so it's just something that City Council should just continue to be aware of. Just wanted to maybe pause there to see if there's any question on the one internal control finding for this year. Okay. Moving on to the next component of our audit, we do have the legal compliance report. The state auditor requires that we do report on certain state statutes specific to Iowa cities, and there were two findings to report this year, just to acknowledge that there are certain funds in a deficit fund balance position. And then the second is to acknowledge that there was a certain function where expenditures did exceed budgeted amounts, so those are the two findings here for two thousand and twenty-four. The last component of our audit is our communications letter. That includes all required communication in accordance with audit standards, but also we provide some additional trend data, looking at the five-year history of the general fund and also the city's enterprise funds. And we start by taking a look at general fund balance, general fund fund balance here over the last five years, and you can see back in two thousand and twenty-two, it was at a high point, and it has declined since then, and there was additional COVID- nineteen pandemic relief funding that was available at that time. And here in two thousand and twenty-four, we did see a decline in fund balance of about three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, which decreased fund balance down to just over four million dollars at the end of the year. The unassigned portion of fund balance are the amounts that are available for future use, also to be there for reserves and cash flow purposes, and that represented about a third of the annual twenty twenty-four expenditure, or about four months of twenty twenty-four expenditures. The next chart highlights the makeup of general fund revenues, comparing two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-three, the majority of revenues coming from property taxes at about fifty-three percent. There was a bit of a shift in the intergovernmental category because of that COVID- nineteen pandemic relief funding. That category was up to twenty percent last year, and that has come down to fourteen percent as those, that funding is mostly spent here as of the end of the year. The next chart highlights, again, general fund revenues in each of those categories, and as we saw or mentioned earlier, revenues did decline in that intergovernmental category, so that decreased overall by about five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, and that was offset by increases in charges for services, which increased about two hundred thousand dollars with the full year of golf course revenue, and then the use of money in property, which includes investment income, which had, with the market having better rates this year, we did see an increase in that area by a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, and that ended to a overall decline in revenue this year of about one point four percent, or about a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, going from about ten million down to about nine point nine million dollars. The next chart highlights the general fund expenditures here and how those are allocated by function here, and this allocation has remained fairly consistent between the two years, with the majority going to public safety at about forty-two percent, and the next highest category being culture and recreation at about thirty-seven percent, but all, all being within about one percentage point comparing to the prior year. The next chart highlights those same functions of general fund expenditures, and also gives you a five-year history. And here in two thousand and fifty, excuse me, two thousand and twenty-four, we did see an overall increase in general fund expenditures of about one point six million dollars. That was about a sixteen percent increase, the majority of that occurring in the public safety category, that increased seven hundred and nine thousand dollars, an increase in wages, also some part-time positions moving to full-time, and also some overtime here in two thousand and twenty-four. Culture and Recreation made up about six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars of the increase in two thousand and twenty-four, and again, that relates to the golf course operations being present there for a full year, also a new golf cart lease here in two thousand and twenty-four. And then Community and Economic Development increased about two hundred and twelve thousand with an increase in contributions to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. The next chart, we start to take a look at the city's enterprise funds, and these present a bit differently in that these are meant to operate like a business, and that these services really should be covered by users' charges that are established by the city. And if we take a look at two thousand and twenty-four revenues, those were flat comparing two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four, and expenses increased from about three point one million to about three point three million dollars, and that relates to the allocation of employee time more being allocated to the water fund here in two thousand and twenty-four, and that ultimately led to a deficit this year of about three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. We also include a metric that excludes depreciation. Depreciation is a non-cash expense in this fund, and if you exclude that, there was positive cash flows in this fund of about eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And as we, you know, use fund balance as a measure of financial health in the general fund, we take a look at net position in the enterprise funds, and specifically, the unrestricted net position would be the amounts that would be available for future capital needs, cash flow purposes, things of that nature. The unrestricted net position in this fund decreased from seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-three to three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars here in two thousand and twenty-four. The next chart is the wastewater fund. This fund experienced a deficit this year of about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. There was a significant decline in revenue this year. There was a large reimbursement in the prior year for the trunk sewer project, and expenses increased from about two point six million to two point nine million dollars with increased repair and maintenance costs. Excluding depreciation, there was about a seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar surplus in terms of cash flow, but there are other non-operating items related to capital and debt service needs. The unrestricted net position in this fund increased from eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand to nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars at the end of the year. The next fund is the electric fund. This fund did experience a surplus in two thousand and twenty-four of about two point five million dollars. We did have increases in revenues and did also see an increase in expenses, and overall, the unrestricted net position in this fund was at thirteen point seven million dollars compared to thirteen point five million dollars in the prior year. And just a reminder there, those are those resources available for capital needs. These enterprise funds do have very significant costs from an infrastructure standpoint, so those resources are, can be utilized for those purposes. The next chart highlights the telecommunications fund. This fund did experience a deficit this year of about forty thousand dollars. The net position in this fund is at a negative nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, so a fund that City Council just should continue to monitor and evaluate just to ensure that those user charges and resources that are available are sufficient to cover those operating costs. The last two charts that we have for you here tonight highlight the tax levy and tax rates. The tax rate has been consistent here over the last five years at ten point two percent. And the next chart highlights the tax levy, which did see, did see just a slight decline from six million, four hundred and seventy-three thousand now to six million, four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars here for two thousand and twenty-four. Lastly, just wanted to thank the finance team, Brian, Vivian, Mike, all their assistance during the audit process. I think they're probably okay, not getting any further questions from us here for this year, but next I'd just like to open any questions from City Council.
Any questions? Thanks for being here. Thanks for the information. Thanks for providing us this service. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we need a motion for approval to accept the audit?
Some. Support.
DeYoung, Branderhorst, any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Man, please call and roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Vince Dryland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number ten fifty-six entitled An Ordinance Amending Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by Amending the Boundaries of the R-two District to Include the Property Generally Located West and Northwest of the intersection of Brook Circle and Idaho Drive in Pella, Iowa, and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map. This is the second reading, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, this evening's rezoning request comes to us from Pella Partners LLC, and specifically, they're requesting to rezone thirty-four acres, which is just just southwest of Highway one sixty-three. It's the yellow highlighted area that we have up on the big board, and I apologize, my pointer actually is battery searching right now and so on, and so I'll have to orally describe the area that we, that we have, and it is located right across from the Brooks subdivision that we have over here. This is the subdivision that we have. But the district is, what's being requested this evening is to rezone the property from A-one Agriculture to R-two Residential. Now, when we talk about R-two, what that means is a two-family residential home subdivision that we have here, both one and two-family homes would be allowed. The City Council ordered through this rezoning request this evening. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the alignment that we have this evening, what you see in the lower would be the right-hand corner of that slide is the city's future use land map, and the city originally identified this as low-density residential. When we look at the proposed rezoning, both single-family and two-family homes would be considered low-density residential under the city's future use land map and also our Land Use Guides in the city's comprehensive plan. So we believe that this rezoning request does align with the city's comprehensive plan. It is important to note that the Planning and Zoning Commission approved this rezoning request after November twenty-fifth meeting, and staff is recommending approval this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
I'll move.
DeYoung, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins? Vince Dryland?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
Support.
Okay, Branderhorst, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins? Vince Dryland?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to it up.
Vince Dryland?
Support.
Carlstone? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Man, please call and roll.
Vince Dryland?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Same.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number ten fifty-seven entitled An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by Amending the Boundaries of the M-one District to Include the Property Generally Located to the south and east of seventeen thirteen Fivefield Road and south of sixteen oh nine Fivefield Road in Pella, Iowa, and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map, and this is the second reading, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain the site, and tonight's rezoning request comes to us from Mr. Mark Brandon Lord. He's requested a rezone approximately nine acre parcel that's located south of Fivefield Road. It's the black highlighted area that we have up on the big road, big board, excuse me, and this rezoning request is from A-one Agricultural to Limited Light Industrial, which is commonly referred to by the acronym M-one under the city zoning codes. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, it is important to note, when you look at the city's future use land map, which is in the lower right-hand column on the slide up there, we believe that the property is identified in the future use land map as being industrial on this, so we believe that this rezoning request does align with the city's comprehensive plan. Planning and Zoning Commission made the same finding when they approved this request after November twenty-fifth meeting, and staff is recommending approval this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Right.
Carlstone, Vince Dryland, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Man, please call and roll.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Vince Dryland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Butler? Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
Support.
Branderhorst, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Vince Dryland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to it up.
Support.
DeYoung, Branderhorst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Vince Dryland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number ten fifty-eight entitled An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by Conditionally Amending the Boundaries of the R-two District to Include the Property Generally Located at the eastern portion of the parcel north of the northern terminus of West Twelfth Street in Pella, Iowa, and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map. This is the second reading, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this request this evening. This request comes to us from Mr. Jeff Dingeman, and his request to zone a property that is just north of West Twelfth Street is shown in the yellow highlighted area on the big board from two-family, from A-one Ag to two-family residential, and then also we do have some R-three, which is multi-family, high-density residential as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, in explaining this request, it is important to note that the request we do from staff's perspective is very similar to what was discussed when the city initially rezoned the lower half of Mr. Dingeman's property, approximately seven acres from A-one Ag to industrial. At that time, it was discussed with both the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the City Council that the northern half of the property would be rededicated towards residential zoning, which is what Mr. Dingeman is requesting this evening. It is important to note that this is a conditional rezoning, with the condition being that there It is important to note that this is a conditional rezoning, with the condition being that there needs to be a final plat that would be approved within twelve months by the Pella City Council for this area. And the reason for the conditional rezoning has to deal with fire flow pressure in the western side of our city. For those, if council is aware, but for those in the audience that may not be aware, this area is actually served by the Iowa Regional Utility Association, commonly referred to as IRUA. For those in the audience may recognize it as Central Iowa Water. They're currently evaluating water tower sites on the western side of Pella, and so in order for the development to proceed, particularly when we talk about the R-three multi-family residential, we'll want to make sure that there's adequate fire flow protection out there for the development as well, at least understanding plans. And the thought is by having the final plat and the infrastructure installed and accepted by the city council within twelve months, we should know IRUA's plans and actually hopefully have the water tower site potentially as well, and understanding of the timeframe for the tower project as well. So that's the reason for the conditional rezoning this evening, with the requirement that the final plat needs to be submitted within twelve months of the ordinance approval. It is important to note that the planning and zoning commission did approve this rezoning request after November twenty-fifth meeting, and city staff is recommending approval this evening as well.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Branderhorst, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, may I?
Real quickly, is, do, does this proposal delineate which ones are R-two, which ones are R-three, what portions are?
Jerry, uh, invite us, um, if you could, the R-three, if you could, uh, actually show them.
Cause it was in our packet of pink and purple.
Regarding the R-three?
Yeah, what portion or proportion of this is R-three versus R-two, or does that have to be the same?
The, uh, portion on this side of the map is R-three, the portion on that side is R-two, and the R-two would be duplexes. The R-threes would be the IRUA property for the water towers. Water utilities can go in any zone of the city, and then the southern portion of the R-three would potentially be apartments.
Would be what?
Apartments.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor, favor of the motion, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call a roll?
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
Support.
Branderhorst, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call a roll?
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to a draw.
Dan Strickland?
Support.
Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call a roll?
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number ten fifty-nine entitled an ordinance amending zoning ordinance of the city of Pella, Iowa by conditionally amending the boundaries of the R-three district to include the property generally located at the western portion of the parcel north of the northern terminus of West Twelfth Street in Pella, Iowa, and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map. This too is the second reading. Mike?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I should have told the council, um, one presentation for two ordinances this evening, so this presentation is exactly the same, and to answer Dr. Carlstone's question, the R-three is actually the western side of the property that's being considered for the rezoning this evening, so.
I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Branderhorst, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call a roll?
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
Right.
Branderhorst, was that Dan Strickland?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call a roll?
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to a draw. Support.
Dan Strickland, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call a roll?
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number ten sixty entitled an ordinance amending zoning ordinance of the city of Pella, Iowa by amending the boundaries of the institutional district to include the property generally located at five eleven Monroe Street, five seventeen Monroe Street, six oh three Monroe Street, six oh seven Monroe Street, six eleven Monroe Street, six fifteen Monroe Street, and the vacated portion of Orchard Drive between five seventeen Monroe Street and six oh three Monroe Street in Pella, Iowa, and directing the zoning, zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map. This is the second reading. Mike?
Hi, yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor de Ward stated, this request comes to us this evening from Pella Regional Health Center, and it's to rezone approximately acre and a half parcel that's located just south of Monroe Street, and the rezoning request this evening is from what's a single-family residential to ultimately institutional zoning, which is the same zoning as the hospital's property, which lets this parcel on here, and that's shown up on our slides that we have as well. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the rezoning area that you'll see is the red highlighted area up on, on the big board as well, it is important to note that staff believes that this rezoning request aligns with the city's comprehensive plan. When the city's comprehensive plan was adopted, this area was identified as institutional zoning, and the terminology used in the city's comprehensive plan was medical and assisted living, which is translates over to institutional zoning in the city zoning codes. So, once again, we believe that this request aligns with the city's comprehensive plan and future use land map, and we are recommending approval this evening. Planning and zoning commission made the same finding when they approved this request after November twenty-fifth meeting as well, and that includes city staff's presentation this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call a roll?
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
I'm staying.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
Support.
Branderhorst, DeYoung, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call a roll?
Branderhorst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
I'm staying.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to a draw. Support.
Dan Strickland, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call a roll?
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
I'm staying.
Motion passed. On a side note, Lynn, you're my hero tonight. Prevented me from reading all of this one more time. Thank you.
I feel like I just clipped out a really big clause there.
We'll move on to abstract of bills. Okay, I get a motion for approval of abstract of bills twenty-one sixty-six.
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Support.
Branderhorst, Carlstone, any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call a roll?
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Council, have any other business you need addressed this evening? Any member of the public have any other business you'd like to address council with this evening? If so, please come to that microphone, state your name and address, please try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Dwight Young, twenty-five oh nine, Scotty Stratt. On the, um, rework of the Tulip Tower, who prepared the specifications for that project, and who approved them? What was the work done in accordance with those specifications?
I'd like to direct that question to...
We had Tomitich Engineering prepare the specifications, and the project was completed to the specifications.
Including the color?
Correct.
Thank you. Last summer, I think the, um, install, uh, there was installation of conduit from, what we'll just say downtown Pella to the boss line and area, and I wondered when the cable might be installed so that we could have the benefits of underground, uh, distribution.
Are you talking about electric? Electric?
Hmm?
You're talking about electric?
Electric, yes.
Yeah.
Nate's, is Nate on, on the phone, Mandy?
Nate is on, hello, can you hear him?
Nate, are you there?
Nate, can you hear? I have a long lead time, and I believe the delivery date is, uh, June of twenty twenty-five, and that cable will begin getting installed then, and hopefully have everybody hooked up by the fall of twenty twenty-five.
Since we already have the conduit installed, why didn't we wait so long to get the cable?
The delivery lead times by the pandemic became greater than one year, so everything kicked off at about the same time, but the, uh, cable was, uh, a long delivery lead time on that.
And, just, could you repeat when, when we hoped to have it turned on?
This fall.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Krista Van Zee, five oh four Monroe Street. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, Pella Regional Hospital and the city for making an agreement with the ambulance transfers. Hopefully that's going to improve the situation, and thank you for doing that, and also for approving the, um, request from the hospital to rezone parts on Monroe Street. Thank you very much.
Anita Fisher, fifteen forty-six, Pleasant Drive. Um, I just have a question for clarification's sake. So, when we talk about city staff recommends, who does that all include? Is it the city administrator and the finance director? Is that the staff, when it says staff recommends?
That's usually city administration's recommendation with the concurrence of the respective departments, so it just depends on what I, what are you talking about.
Okay. Okay, so it's, great. Dwight, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move into our, oh, sorry.
Megan Copeland, seventeen nineteen L Drive. Um, if it's your backyard, you're going to care about it too. So the soccer complex is my backyard. The city boundaries used to be the actual backyard where it was city property, and when we moved into our street, we were told that it would be annexed in that area. It was only annexed because they would get the road, they would allow the road if it had an HOA. The house, the road never had an HOA, but the city still annexed the area and with a poor-conditioned road, and the HOA was never established. So now I'm hearing thoughts that with the soccer complex, they're going to add this extra cost of a road when we've never asked for the road to be fixed. We've never asked for the road to be done, and if it is the city's property, and then they decided now to annex it in, then it should have been the city's responsibility to get it up to code for it was accepted as an annex part of the city limits, from my understanding. I'm not positive on that, um, but that's a question to throw out there. How does that work? Is it grandfathered then? Because I don't think it should be need, necessary to get playing fields for our kids. The other thing is the water line installation, and it could be argued that the city should have, uh, anticipated the need for that water line when the road construction was planned, because I believe that road construction also was supposed to be in sections. It was only supposed to be to the corner. Then all of a sudden, within the next month, they decided, oh, no, we're going to add another million dollars to it and get it up to Shady Brook. And within that time period, the water lines have gone bad or needed to get fixed and weren't taken care of. So I'm curious as to why that is now also being thrown out there as another reason. We have only asked for playing fields. We have only asked to get the playing fields maintained in July. You said, yes, we would get the playing lines, a playing field, or playing fields maintained and up to a playable condition, and then all of a sudden it said, no, the fields will not be playable on twenty twenty-five. I understand maintenance and work needs to be done, however, the give and take and going back and forth, uh, the delays, the, was on the agenda, then taken off the agenda, who gets to make the agenda and do that to people who would decide to come and speak? It just seems like we're playing games with this, this soccer complex. It's been since two thousand and nineteen, there's been known issues. Also, I'm sorry to have to say this, we've had a council person that is my council person in that area. Numerous people have tried to address and get answers to it, and no response. We've gotten no response to emails and concerns and say, how do we approach this? We've heard nothing from our city council person. So we're also asking to find out, how do we take that step to find a way to get a better answer to address you guys and get our concerns and our needs met? And, uh, there's so much more that could be said, but really, we just want fields, playable fields. Whatever your budget is that you're saying is going to be at the sports park, the two point eight, I don't believe that includes the final numbers for the other little fields that were going to be needed in the future. So all this speaking of maze and potentials that are needed even at the sports complex, those are also maze and need is and potentials that are going to be added on to your total number for the sports park. So make it make sense. I need to make it make sense. Stop playing around. Let's get fields for our kids to play on.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move into our discussion about, uh, go to policy and planning, discuss the soccer complex update first.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, be happy to. And Mayor Ward stated we have an update on the city soccer complex repair that we have this evening. It's really more of a communication item on two aspects. One, we have an increase in scope with the project within with the need for an additional water line through the irrigation pond. And then, two, there are improvements that we believe may be necessary to, for continued operations at the city soccer complex within the next five, 10 years potentially that we simply wanted to make council aware of when we discuss this project. Now, a little bit of background on this. Last July, we did evaluate two options. Prior to that, it wasn't the city's budget. We're very similar discussions for as far as future soccer needs within the community. Really, the two choices that have been considered was to upgrade the current fields or build a new soccer complex at the city's sports, uh, sports park. Now, the cost of the numbers that we had of the discussion in July was to build a new sports park. The new soccer fields at the sports park was roughly $2.8 million. When we discussed upgrading the city soccer complex, we had two repairs. And those were what was actually in the city's capital improvement program. We actually had repaired the irrigation system of roughly $670,000. And then we'd also discussed paving the entrance drive and parking lot as well for an additional $589,000. The direction that we received that evening was to proceed with repairing the city's irrigation system for $670,000 for go for the time being. The paving of the city's park parking lot as well as the entrance drive. Now, and coming up to this point this evening, we do have an increase in project scope. We believe that there will need to be an additional water line that will need to be installed through the city's irrigation pond as well. If you do have questions on this, we have both the Public Works Department and the Community Services Department back and staff that will be able to answer the questions on the additional water line. But that's an estimated cost of about an additional $30,000 that we do have for the project. Now, secondly, Mandy, you can go ahead, please, on the second page. Community services submitted a list of repairs at the soccer complex that they believe could be foreseeable in the near future. They did not have a timeframe on these repairs. I picked out some of the bigger ones that we have. And I think it's more just a communication issue because when we discussed this item in July, we simply talked about the parking lot and the need to upgrade the parking lot. But there's other areas of the soccer complex that may need attention in the foreseeable future. And so we just want to make sure council is aware that as we proceed with the budget, if a few of these items show up in the capital improvement project list for the next five years, that we're not caught off guard. And we wanted to make sure before we actually made a decision to proceed on this that we, A, disclose that the need for the additional water line and increase in the project cost of $30,000 as well as other potential improvements that may be needed in the foreseeable future as well. And finally, as far as the timeline for the repairs, we believe that the irrigation system repairs will take place in calendar year 2025. Now, as far as how long it will take the grass to recuperate and be able to play from a safe standpoint in the permitted timeframe, this is the same timeframe that we talked about in July. And it looks like the fall of 2026 before the fields are playable. They may be playable before then. We'll make every effort to have that happen. But we just want to make sure that the key takeaway is, A, that it's the same timeframe that we talked about last fall. So summarize, two issues. Additional cost of $30,000 for the water line. And there's likely to be some additional improvements that will be needed at the city soccer complex in the foreseeable future. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes staff's presentation of both Jeanette and Kevin are in the back as well. They'd be happy to answer any questions. And also, I'd like to give them an opportunity to discuss the improvement, potential improvements in the future as well as the other ones that were not mentioned as well, so.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Do you have some input? You want to give us Kevin and Jeanette a moment or take questions?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. We just wanted to do our due diligence and take one more look at this project and then make sure council is aware that the improvements that we do this fiscal year don't address all of the issues. They don't address all the requests that we've received for improvements at the complex. So we just want to make sure going forward that we're all on the same page that these improvements will not bring the complex up to, I'm just trying to think of some of the terms that we've heard the last two years, up to pellet standards, up to visitor standards, that type of thing. So we just want to make sure that, that we know moving forward, we'll have additional improvements that we need out there. But this initial project does address one of the, the base of the irrigation system. So it's a step in the right direction. We just want to make sure this is the direction we want to go.
All right. I, I think as Mike said, last July or whatever, the council moved, wanted to move forward with repairing the existing facility. That was what the message, I think, was. Just a little additional information, so. Talk to you guys, I'll jump in. I've waffled back and forth on this. I think we should repair what is there. And I see no reason for it to take over a year to do it when I see how quickly Kevin can reseed a golf course fairway and make it playable again. I see no need to pave. I think the goal should be eventually moving this out to the sports park. But we've got to have something playable in the meantime.
I, I agree 100% with you, Mark. And Megan, I don't blame your frustrations, but I want to compliment the soccer families because of when I do receive an email from, from the soccer parents, they are always so respectful. And that isn't always the case. So for that, I am so appreciative. And I agree with Mark. I not only want to move forward, I want to expedite this project. And by non-pavement of the parking lot is going to be one of those things that expedites the project. I highly doubt many of our soccer parents will mind parking on gravel for a bit. Because I did hear in past meetings that that wasn't a priority to you, was a newly blacktopped parking lot. But I would say, if we could, I'd have people out there with shovels tomorrow.
These parents have been so polite. But on the other hand, for years, as I think the date was here, so frustrated for years. I mean, I've been, I have kept score for important soccer games in Colorado with stopwatches because the, uh, the paper scoreboard is the score that really counts. You know, let's not get hung up on some of these trivial things. Let's get this thing going because we have been moving way too slowly for two, three, four years on these. These are mirrors should have been done years ago. It's worse than shameful that nothing has happened on this. We need to move way faster. You know, we've got people like Kevin and Chandler who can do some of this stuff. And it's been neglected way too long. I'm surprised, I, I've heard people from, uh, coaches that coach little kids all the way to high school coaches that have been frustrated for years. We need to move like yesterday on this. And it just seems like we've been pushing it back and pushing it back. And as I will repeat, it's worse than shameful what we've done to this soccer complex. We need to move and not just, you know, wait and wait and wait. Let's get something done finally.
You know, I would, I would echo that too. I remember a year ago, the soccer complex was very high on the list of things to get, to get done. And here, a whole year's going fine. We haven't, we haven't turned a spade dirt out there, I don't think. And, and we, it just seems like, now, we have an engineering service agreement. We have that. I don't know why they can't start working in the spring of this year. I don't know why we have to wait until the fall. I'm, I'm in, uh, we don't know what kind of year we're going to get, if we get a lot of rain, that grass will come right out back. So I, we, we just have delayed it. It seems to me it's been delayed too long for some reason. I don't know why. I don't know why it's so slow. And, and an extra 70 or $30,000 on this project is not a problem, I don't think. I don't see that as a big problem.
One of the issues that were raised is restroom improvements. What kind of condition are the restrooms, Aunt Jeanette?
Uh, restroom conditions, they are original since 1993. And so it would be potentially, you know, the fixtures in there, the sinks, the footations, stuff like that. The heating, the heating system for the seasonal is kind of, it's been on the blitz. But some of those type of things. Nothing to the structure walls. So far, the structure walls, we've done some repairs over the years to the cracks in the mortar. But so far, that's, that's held up.
What's the anticipated lifespan of the new irrigation system? Every time, I mean, it's been 35 years. We're out, about four or five years ago. Are they 30-year runs or a?
25-year run as usual. That's, that's pretty standard. When this system was put in in 93 or operational 93, it was a U system. And is one of the older systems. It's only, it's the only functioning hydraulic type control system in its state right now. So I welcome a new system. And so, Mark, going back to your, on the restroom stuff, we would also, if so far, I think everything, you know, with the ADA is compliant, so, but those things would need to be addressed if there was anything raised in the future.
To the end of the timeframe, I think, certainly soccer families deserve. I think we ought to march out a little more an overarching plan for how to transition from, you know, spending this money to, as that transitional kind of fee that we're talking about, to try and move it to, let's be less vague than that. Let's try to map out in a CIP kind of format when, when we're anticipating putting in. Are we doing a couple of times at a new place? So we're doing all the whole inch of line in place. Really, we have a reference point there of them, us to kind of go to, this is how it goes to move.
I think it is on the CIP right now. I think it is on the CIP right now. And the picture that you just pulled up for the place across from your circle, it shows the soccer complex is green. That's a park. It's a park for the next 20 till 2035, I think your plan was for. And so why did we pay for people to develop a plan? Why did we pay experts to come up with a city plan to say what's going to be possibly needed? And they said, yeah, a park, we're going to keep the park. Future land use as it as a park. It does not have it as development. And that's what we've been told has been the hangup. The hangup has been they want to sell land so that they can get money for the rec center. And then people on the council or people within the city departments want to be part of the development and money up with it.
I, I need to correct one statement. No one said anything about the money for the rec center. The discussion was if we sold the land, it would go to a new soccer complex out at.
It would offset.
At this sports park, not the rec center.
Okay.
And it would seem to be there plenty of land there to have a green space and hogs. About 37 acres, something like that.
20, it's 20 acres. So anyway, I, I've, I'm feeling like council is in favor of let's get off the ball, get off the schneid here and get this project rolling. I, do we have a contract for the engineer? Okay. Have we signed a contract for the engineer?
No, we haven't signed it, yeah.
Okay, well, let's get the contract signed and let's get the project moving. And I agree, we need to have a long-term plan for the soccer complex. And if we're, if we think we want to move it sometime, I think we should get that plan in place.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. We have participation numbers that are skyrocketing for the city program. The primary user of the soccer complex right now is a private soccer club. So I think when we get down to those long-term plans, we need to look at where the participation levels are and what services are being provided at both facilities, so.
Yeah, but we can, we can certainly get.
But definitely, yep.
This complex plan soon as we can. I think that's a clear message you can get.
I don't, but words, I'm inferring that what you're saying, if we don't pave here, that's money that could be paved where we actually need the parking lots. And that would be where we all drive on the grass to go see our junior partner play currently, you know? And so I think those are the decisions we have to kind of line up.
We, we love that idea. Thank you for bringing that up. We'd much rather spend the money to pave out at the sports park where we actually need it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm referring back to a, a discussion that we had in July and then one prior to that where parents very respectfully said, hey, don't pave it for us. We're good with gravel. And, and my strong reminder.
That's what we said, we just want playing fields. But here, the thing is, you're saying let's pave out there at the sports park. Well, then, if you're going to pave anywhere, why don't we keep what we have so we have something on both sides of town? So pave, fine, then put it in your future plans to pave the sports complex. So it's money here or there, it's going to either place. But really, in the planning of the city, you want the green space. You're going to need to have, we've already been driving for 20 years on gravel out there. I, I'm just sorry.
Oh, don't apologize, Megan, please.
Anybody have any pushback to the plan? Okay, let's move. Let's get the engineering done, let's get started.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the upgraded public safety, radio, dispatch councils.
I guess, as Mayor Ward stated, we're here to talk about the city proposed radio system and dispatch council upgrade project. It is important to note tonight, we're going to be discussing new cost estimates that we do have for the project as well. The good news is the overall cost of the project has gone down. And I'd like to thank Chief McShaggy for his efforts on that, on that portion of the project as well. A little bit of background on this, when we talk about the city's current radio system, staff believes that it is in need of current upgrade due to its inability to provide the necessary coverage for the city's public safety departments. And it's important to note that in addition to the city's public safety departments in the city of Palo, we also provide coverage out to rural Marion County and Mahaska County as well. And that's probably where some of the more, I'd say, pressing coverage area needs or are needed when we talk about both the dispatch system as well as the radio system upgrade as well. Now, I think it goes without saying that it is very important to have a reliable radio system and dispatch system for public, to support our public safety departments as well. And that's been one of the underlying themes as far as the need for this project as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, the map that you see up on the big board, you see quite frequently, we've talked about the city's ambulance department. And that's the same coverage area that the ambulance department currently provides in rural Marion County as well as Mahaska County as well. They currently receive dispatch services from the city of Palo for the same area. Now, as far as the two options, when we looked at particularly upgrading the dispatch councils and the radio system, we have two different vendors here. Option number one would be the current Raycom system that is currently the city is using for dispatch services. The second option would be to change the Iowa statewide interoper- interoperable communication system, commonly referred to as the ISIC system. This system is used by the Marion County Sheriff's Department. Now, to help us out in making a recommendation on this investment for the city of Palo, we did hire a consultant, Drew North. They are recommending, Drew North's recommendation came back to the city to continue with the Raycom system using the SAR network system due to its coverage area or what they view as superior coverage area from the Raycom system. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the project is concerned, this evening, we had two options. Option number one would be to upgrade the radio system only. It is important to note, this auction, we would have five radio channels for our public safety departments involved a one-time cost of $475,000 and roughly $25,000 to $35,000 on an annual basis for annual maintenance. Option number two would be not only to upgrade the radio system, but also upgrade the dispatch councils as well. That would be a $515,000 one-time fee. The annual maintenance cost of this auction would be between $48,000 and $61,000 over the next 10 years. It will also provide our public safety departments with an unlimited number of, of, of channels as well. Now, we'd like to make sure council is aware, our large employers in town have also shown interest in actually having access to the radio system and having a channel on the radio system. And, you know, what's been discussed is potentially a contribution to the project in exchange for providing a channel on the city's radio system. It is important to note that if we were to go down this option and choose this option and provide that benefit to our large employers, we'd have to make careful considerations if we issued debt for this project specifically, we may not be able to issue tax, a tax-exempt debt for the project. It may have to be taxable debt if we were to offer that to private industry. But we wanted to make sure, the takeaway is that private large employers have shown interest in having access to a channel on the radio system as well. Now, as far as, once again, the overall cost for the one-time fee was $515,000. Annual maintenance cost, $48,000 to $61,000. Before we go on with the rest of the presentation, is there any questions as far as the two cost options or the two options that we're discussing as far as the radio system upgrade?
So I, I saw in our packet some potential assistance by the larger corporations. Is that under either, either scenario or we have to go with the, the additional channels? The move from the 475 to 515 to meet their needs? Have, do we have to answer that question?
Now, we have to go with option two. We can do another option one. I spec out five channels based on what I thought, you know, we needed as a minimum. But if we're going to bring big businesses on board, then we'd have to buy yet another channel. And so that conversation depends on who wants to, you know, partner with us. That price rises with these channels.
So if we're at two channels, we're already on the base system, we're already beyond the upgraded console. It's really, it just comes down to the annual maintenance is the, is the actual delta between the two.
Seems, seems like option two is the way we need to go.
Yeah.
Chief, is that, you know, that's the correct direction to go, right? You're the, you're the expert.
That would be my recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Staff, would you refer up to you, Duane?
Yes.
So that, that's an unlimited number of channels, let's see.
That is correct.
It seems like there'd be some, I mean, there's other people out there. So some.
Yeah, we believe we'd be able to add a sufficient number of channels to support communities' needs. Probably a better way of stating that.
Okay.
Public Works communicate through this also or is that entirely different?
Another great question, and that, and that's what we're really talking about. That interoperability piece, you know, what we think we may need now is not what I'm thinking of. I'm projecting 10, 15, 20 years down the road. And so when we look at what that looks like, that interoperability becomes so important. Public Works is a great opportunity to bring those folks into our network. And, you know, schools and, and other businesses will have so. Careful considerations made. The other thing I want to just kind of briefly say is there's going to be an offset maintenance cost. We're right now paying about $10,000, $11,000 maintenance already. So that would not be in addition to that. So that wouldn't be on top of that. So you kind of bring in some of that $10,000 cost into the annual maintenance here.
I think the last thing that staff has is we just want to make sure council is also aware that we did reach out to Marion County as far as the ISIC system. Marion County is currently on the ISIC system. And Chief, just to summarize on this, is my understanding Marion County was not willing to contribute for the additional towers that would be needed for the city of Palo to use ISIC system. Is that correct?
Yeah, we've looked at this nine ways a Sunday. You know, price does drive the sale ultimately, but there's more to it than that. If you're just looking at a better system and a better cost, then we're providing you with the best option here. If you're just looking at a better system and a better cost, then we're providing you with the best option here. And the other thing to think about, too, is there is a benefit to having two systems. Now, I want to make it perfectly clear, we will be able to talk to Marion County, they will be able to talk to us. And so, so will those other agencies, should we have a critical incident, another tornado, or H.O., whatever. So that shouldn't be, that's not an issue. The benefit to having two systems, if you really think about it, is if one system crashes, we can use their system and vice versa. So you, I look at that as a benefit and not a hindrance because we can talk to them pretty seamlessly.
Sounds good. Last, you got any updates on the other projects that we have been talking about?
Yeah, Mandy, let's go ahead and show them what we have on the list.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. That's what we have as far as upcoming policy and planning sessions on the last half of January, early February. We anticipate these items should be discussed at one of those two meetings. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we'd also say if the city council has any questions on any other city project that's not on this list, please feel free to ask.
My old favorite, water. Where are we at with water?
The water, we're still working with the city's engineer, Mr. Bob Beanstrap, on multiple fronts on this. On both, the, what I would say is commonly referred to as probably the filtration issue that we're currently experiencing at the water plant with the need potentially to install pre-filter option on this. We're working with, as far as his recommendation on the size of the filter and potentially the estimated cost. We anticipate that should be, you know, again, we're hoping to have that sometime within the next 60 days. We're also working with Mr. Beanstrap as well on what I would say is the lead water service line replacement program. That's somewhat of a, I'd say, influx as far as federal requirements on that as well. So we're working with that. We anticipate that should be sometime within the first quarter of this year, too. The hope that we'll be back with city council discussing that in the policy and planning session.
All right. Okay, anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Carl Stone Hopkins. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Megan Tyland?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Rayner?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
We are adjourned.